You're good.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4-6 at second of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Here.
Jaskiewicz.
Here.
Kaplan.
Here.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Present.
Chairman Ira Kane.
Present.
We also have with us our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
President.
Board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Just for information purposes for members of the public, Mr. Jaskiewicz is on his Zoom call. He will be able to see all the exhibits and listen to the testimony. We'll start off with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as it is. At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none and see none. We're gonna go right into the cases, the applications. First one is Christopher and Kathleen Cruz, 18 Mohawk Mohican Place, seeking a variance to construct a six-foot high fence.
Could you raise your right hand? You swear from testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got? And for the record, you're Christopher Cruz. Yeah, you're sworn. You can have a seat and just please speak into the microphone.
So, Mr. Cruz, you're allowed a four-foot high fence, 50% see-through. You're proposing a six-foot fence solid. Now, um, I don't see any diagrams in your package. Is there a diagram in your plate? Let me look at this before you hear.
Oh, yeah. From the very last page.
Is there a diagram? Is there a diagram, Nora?
Yes, there is.
Is it in my package?
You should have it. Look at the last page of his own.
I got it. Okay, I got it. Okay, so, um, I went by your house today because I'm extremely concerned about six-foot high fences. We don't approve six-foot high fences unless there's extenuating circumstances. Okay? Now, look at your di- look at your diagram here, and you're basically taking that fence to the property line, aren't you, along Sioux Avenue?
Oh, that's correct.
Right.
Would you speak up?
Sorry, yes, that's correct.
Um, I'm gonna throw some things out to you, okay? The six-foot high fence is very, in my opinion, is very intimidating to the neighborhood and the neighbors and anybody that drives by. Would you consider a five-and-a-half-foot fence? I'm sorry, a five-foot fence with the top one foot, either a lattice or a stripe-type effect, that's number one. Number two, would you consider moving it back a little bit from your property line, maybe like three feet? Okay? And, which is not, I looked at your backyard, you've got a pretty nice-sized backyard. And the third thing is, would you consider putting some vegetation outside the fence? Now, it doesn't have to be anything tall, but maybe just some little small shrubs to break the look of the fence, okay? Which we, you know, and I, and I know there are six-foot high fences in town, and I can guarantee you that 99.9% of them are illegal. They've never gotten a zoning grant. I want, I want you to have your privacy, and I'm sure the board wants you to have your privacy, but we also want something that's gonna look a little less prison-like.
Sure, I understand.
Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yes.
Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
You have small children? You have a dog? What, what is?
Yeah, I do have a one-year-old who's now
Okay, so you want
walking and running.
Right, you want, and, and, and the street is right there on two sides, I understand. I don't think I had ever been on Mohican Place before, although we live about a mile away from there. I actually had to put it into GPS to find it. But I, you know, I'm just trying, now, I don't know what you wanna do on the other two sides. If you wanna go with the six-foot, those are okay. You could do the six-foot on the other two sides.
Sure.
But I don't know if you're gonna want to do that. You've got that nice look on the one side, you may wanna continue, but that's something you can decide.
Sure.
You know, you can talk to your fence man and see what, what, is what I'm saying makes sense?
Yes.
Does it make sense?
Yes, it does, it does. Can I comment?
Sure, go right ahead.
Um, if I'm being honest, the vegetation, I, I did look into that.
Right.
Um, and an affordability issue comes into play, only because the ones that are, are either semi-mature or fully mature.
Right.
They tend to run a little more expensive.
Right.
So if you, you get enough of them to kinda give the
What are you talking about? What kind of vegetation?
Uh, like privacy shrubs or privacy trees.
I, I
There's no
Fundamental grasses, just to break it up.
No, I'm, I'm just saying maybe some, some azaleas or maybe some, some small, um
Grasses.
Grasses, grasses are inexpensive, and they're just, you just, at the end of the year, you just gotta cut 'em all down so they grow nice the next year. I have grasses in both of my houses, and, well, I tell you, they, they just, they're re- and, and there are some really nice ones. There, there's some that'll go crazy, so you gotta talk to the, you might wanna talk to the town forest or talk to a landscaper or somebody, but just not, nothing expensive. I'm not talking about, uh, what is it? Catanias? Catan?
What is it? Tall ones, the ones that the deer like to eat?
Yeah.
You know, not, not like Norway spruce or anything like that?
Right.
Just something, just something to break it up a little bit, because you've got the space.
His recommendation for the vegetation was not to create more privacy, was just to break up and soften the look of the solid fence.
Okay.
I mean, if you were gonna use vegetation as a, as the border, then you put up a nice metal fence with, you get so much width, and you put the, you put the shrub, the tall shrubs outside, and, and, and then you create that natural fence, which is very nice, but that would be very much more stressful. I, you know, I'm just looking for
Sure.
A couple hundred bucks worth of, worth of shrubs.
Okay. Um, can I be honest?
Yes.
I actually, I like that second option that you mentioned, where it's five, five-foot with a foot lattice.
Right.
Um, now, you're saying, am I able to
It's four, would be four foot.
Four plus one, five foot altogether.
Yes, five feet altogether, but the top
Right.
One foot is lattice or something.
Right.
Okay. Um, am I allowed to kind of swing in a certain direction, like what I prefer or what I don't prefer?
Sure, yes, you can tell us.
Okay, yeah, I'd really prefer that over the shrubbery. Um, I don't mind putting in shrubbery.
You got the shrubbery wrong.
Okay.
The shrubbery is just little grasses, azaleas.
Just something
I think I'm visibly gonna have to see it.
And you only got
Just wanna decorate the outside of the fence, that's all.
You only got 50 feet of area to cover up, I, I can't imagine you have much more dense plants.
Yeah, yeah, but whatever, five feet, that's all, just something to break it up.
Sure.
And, you know, you might wanna plant some flowers out there in the summer, you know, just to make it look a little bit better, you know, this, okay? That all make sense to you?
Yeah, it does.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given? I hear none and see none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No.
Any members in public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. Comment? Somebody make a comment?
We're still giving a variance for the 50% see-through.
Yes. Yes, yes, we're giving them a variance for a five-foot high, the four feet is of a solid nature, solid material, and one foot with the lattice.
How far back do we agree it's coming off the road?
Three feet, not off the road, off the property line.
That's what I meant.
Okay. Are you talking about the plantings inside that three-foot area?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you can, you can get back farther if you want, if you decide you want more space, put your garden area in the front, you can do that, but you can't be less than three.
You can go four or five if you wanted to, I don't think, I think you want the most backyard you can.
I'm trying to get the most
And this is the section off of Sioux Avenue?
Sioux Avenue, yes.
That little piece?
Yep.
No, like I want?
Like I want.
Big lot.
Okay, was that your comment, Mr. Berkowitz? Your favor?
Yes.
Okay, someone frame a resolution? Please.
Page 2216, Christopher and Kathleen Cruz, Mohican Place, Block 527, Lot 1, Don't Law, Court, Reclaiming Grants and Grant Varyance to Construct a Five-Foot High Fence, Four-Foot Solid, One-Foot Lattice, uh, contrary to Section 430-11, A and B, Three Feet Off the Property Line, With Agreeing to Some Strawberry on the Outside.
Second. Any discussion, Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Results of variance is granted, we'll memorialize this in two weeks, and then you'll be free to proceed.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Application 2216, Stephen and Antonella Jaehara, 7 Fern Cliff Road, See Varyance to Construct the Driveway Expansion. Is the applicant here? You're not the applicant. Uh-huh. Nora?
I heard from him.
Is this supposed to come?
Chairman, could you do me a favor? Just face the camera a little bit more straight, I'm looking out towards the right.
Stay.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Good.
Nora, you got any tape?
Uh, here they are.
Well, I, I think, wait, I can do it.
The applicant's here.
How's that?
Good, thank you.
You can see most of the room, right?
Yep.
Are you Antonella?
Yes, I am.
Come on up, come on up, we're waiting for you.
Just circle around the building to kind of figure out where to enter.
Yeah, we're not easy, we're not easy to find.
Okay, what do I get?
Great, come over here. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes.
And for the record, you're Antonella Jaehara.
Jaehara.
And you're the owner of the subject property?
I am.
Right, you're sworn, put your hand down, and have a seat, and please speak into the microphone.
So you're proposing a driveway setback of three feet, where five foot is allowed and 11 feet is existing, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And, um, can you tell us a little bit why you want to do this?
Yes, um, the reason why we wanna do this is to be able to fit two vehicles in that area that are adjacent. Um, if I can describe my driveway, it's a very, very steep hill, um, and the flat part of it, once you drive up it, it can only fit one vehicle, and if we were to expand, um, without going into things like that, we would not be able to fit two vehicles adjacent. Um, and then, in addition to that, I have three kids, and, um, you know, I have a teenager that's gonna be driving in a couple years, I have twins that are twins, they're gonna be driving, so within five years, we could potentially have five vehicles.
Pardon me, fly away.
Sorry, I just, I never ran a marathon, I apologize.
Been there.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, um, you say your, your, your house is elevated from the street, so the driveway is steep.
That is correct.
Have you talked to your next-door neighbor about the, um, proposal?
I have. Uh, George, uh, I forgot his last, uh, his last name, Crutchlow, yeah, I did speak with the Crutchlos, and they were totally fine with it.
Okay.
Let me answer your question, you've got eight feet between the side of the house and the existing driveway, that's what shows here.
That is correct.
Why didn't you expand towards the house and then you wouldn't even have to be here?
We are expanding toward the house, that's included. Even with that, we still can't fit
Oh, I see, that's all gonna be paved.
Yeah, because you have to be able to open the doors without bumping into each other. I mean, we did measure it, believe me, I didn't want to do the variance thing.
Yeah, you've got almost 30 feet of blacktop across there.
Yeah, we, we measured my vehicle, my husband's vehicle, we have now, opening the doors, you know, that sort of thing, and not like being too close where you have, you don't, you know, wanna be touching.
Is there any bushes or anything along that common property line?
Between
There's a fence that comes down, you're gonna go right up to the fence, right?
That is correct.
Is there any bushes or anything there between you and your neighbor?
No.
Would you like some?
I'm sorry?
Would you like some?
Maybe.
Are you offering?
Well, they would have to go on the other people's property.
No, she's
Oh, no, no, she's got three feet.
She's got three feet.
There's a fence there?
No.
No, it stops at the back.
Oh, it stops at the back. Is there anything between you and your neighbor?
Uh, no, that area, that specific area, no.
So there's just grass between your houses?
Correct.
What's on his side of his house? Is his garage there or is it living space?
His, it's, uh, his driveway is on the opposite end.
So his, whatever rooms that are facing your driveway.
Yes. I would, yeah. I, I wouldn't mind putting a few bushes there to separate it, to, you know.
Yeah, I mean, three feet, you know, let's put anything in there.
Yeah.
I, do you have, do you have deer problems there or not?
Uh
We have deer problems everywhere.
Yeah, uh, we, our house backs up into woods, so we do have
So, so, you know, maybe, maybe decorative, maybe something, again, grasses, you can, you know, the grasses, they, they
Why don't you just go online, look for deer-resistant evergreens, and pick some? Now, let's just figure out how many of them you want. You got about a space about 20 feet deep, so if you put them five foot on center, they're not gonna do much in the first year, but a couple years, they'll look fine.
So four? John?
Five.
Five?
And you just deer-resistant evergreens.
Okay.
Any other questions by the board?
Yes, I have questions. You know, typically, a two-car garage will be 24 feet, and this is almost 30 feet here.
No, you, I
Why, why can't we just eliminate two?
I made a mistake, you gotta take three off, so it's down to 26, which is not really three cars.
No, two cars, I was, no, three, okay. So it is, it is 26, not 29?
Yeah, 29, yeah, I did the same thing. That's the, from the property line.
All right. This whole distance thing, come back.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of these, this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No.
Any members of the public have any, is there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. Is it a good application, someone?
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution?
Uh, application 2216, Stephen and Antonella Jaehara, 7 Fern Cliff Road, Block 168, Lot 91, in the Arc 3 Zone, I recommend that we grant the C variance to construct a driveway expansion contrary to Section 430-275 X. Second, ready?
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Results of the variances granted, we'll memorialize this in two weeks. Antonella is a very pretty name.
Yeah.
Is it Italian or?
It's Italian, it's my grandmother's name.
Oh, that's nice. My wife was named after her grandmother, that's, that's very
It's very traditional.
Yep. Old school.
Thank you very much.
All righty, take care now.
You know the fastest way back to your car now?
Did you drop breadcrumbs?
Thank you very much.
I guess we could use some signage out there.
Yeah.
They always go
Oh, okay.
Oh, there's a resolution.
Well, I would of course have put a little sign in front door, oh, dummy little
Oh, that was very
Meeting room or something.
These can all be done together.
Right outside.
Uh, motion to adjourn the 7 o'clock meeting if we don't have anything else.
Nothing else.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, so we're
Go ahead, you're right.
All righty. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4-6 at second of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Please call the roll, Nora.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Yeah.
Mr. Parek.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Chairman Ira Kane.
Present.
We also have with us our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Okay, we're gonna dispense with the pledge of allegiance, because we already did that. We're gonna do our resolutions. Resolution, first one is Berkowitz, Jaskiewicz, Kaplan, Parek, Ready, and that's it. Someone like to move that one?
Mr. Chairman, I move, uh, application 21, I guess, call in 106 for approval.
Is there a second?
Second, ready.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Okay, the next one, 2122, this is a resolution to dismiss. Berkowitz, Jaskiewicz, Kaplan, Parek, Ready.
Did, was that one received?
Excuse me?
Was that one received?
It may not have been.
I don't think it was, though.
I'm sorry, Nora, I didn't hear what you said.
This one was not received, yeah.
Take that off?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we've got three Cs here, well, not Cs, but they're, the next one in line, Berkowitz, Jaskiewicz, Parek, Ready, and Ira Kane. Somebody move 2196, 2198, and 2199.
Those moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Who seconded? Parek?
Casey.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. 2207 and 06, uh, Berkowitz, Jaskiewicz, Kaplan, Parek, Ready, and Ira Kane. Someone move those two?
Move Jaskiewicz.
Thank you.
Second, ready.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. 210, 21107, 2209.
2119, I don't think is, we said that either, did we?
That, well, that one's not ready either.
2119 is not ready?
No.
2107, 20, 2209.
Right, thank you, Mr. Ready. Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. You know, that house on Vale Road, I guess they removed all the variances, so there's, so we never got the, we never got the drainage put in there, right?
Well, you withdrew the application, didn't you?
I, I understand that, but if we let him keep it, he was gonna put the drainage in to do the whole thing.
Yep.
And now, I bet, yeah, but now I bet you that it's, the drainage problems are still there, we don't have, nothing we can do.
You gotta go to the town engineer.
I believe he removed it back to the original.
Oh, good. Okay. All right, so we got the resolutions. Now we can go to the agenda.
Before we do, do we want to deal with the Ziden application, the request?
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty. Okay, um, this is an application that's been hanging around since two thousand twenty. And there has been, obviously, the COVID issues where we weren't meeting. And then there was a meeting when they, um, they were, they were prepared, but we only had four members. Um, I, I would recommend that we give them one more opportunity because the, the improvements are already in place. So it's not like we're delaying him from doing anything, but in the meantime, he's enjoying the improvements without the variance. Uh, any comments or from, yeah, he's a so I say we give them one more chance.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Dave?
Yep.
Okay, Bernie? Everybody?
What do you mean by one more chance? Scheduled for one more time?
One more time. If he doesn't show, we're, we'll dismiss it.
And then what happens?
What do you reckon?
Then, then they, then they, uh,
Dismiss it with
administration has to go, and they're going to cite him.
Okay.
You know, there's, I'll tell you, there's an unprecedented amount of delays and controversial and people accusing us of stuff. It's, it's I, I don't know. Is it COVID? Tell me. Go ahead. So, uh, Mr., who made the resolution? To carry it to, when are we carrying it to?
September fourteenth.
September fourteenth. Do I have a resolution to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second? And that will be with extension and without further notice, correct? Is there anybody here for that application? Two fifty Park Road?
He, he did offer to renotice because so much time has passed.
Are you gonna have him notice?
He made the offer.
Okay, then have him notice.
And if you would like, he'll put it in the paper. Otherwise, he was not going to do that. It was going to be up to the board.
What do you think?
It's so stale. I would, I would notice.
Yeah, let, do the notice.
Full notice, okay.
Do the notice. Okay, so we have, um, a resolution to carry this case to September fourteenth with proper extensions and with paper notice, right?
Mm-hmm.
Who's resolution is that?
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that takes care of Zeldin.
Is he not available tonight? Is that what happened?
Attorney wasn't available. He had a conflict with another case and his, his associate was also in conflict, so. Because we, because of COVID and because of the one meeting when they were here and we weren't
Yeah.
I have, I have to give him one more chance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's only fair.
Cause of pettiness.
Alrighty, I'm gonna call case twenty-one fifty-four and please, I don't wanna uh, pack up the name. Is it Tasevsky? Tasevsky?
Tasevsky.
Come on up. Did I do go with the what name? I got it?
Close. Uh, who's gonna provide testimony? Both of you?
I'll just translate it in your face if somebody don't understand.
All right, we're gonna square, whoever's gonna testify, we're gonna square him in.
So the, the two witnesses, raise your right hand.
I'm not a witness.
You're not a witness.
I'm a wife.
Raise your right hand.
You can make both.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to receive, that you're about to provide before this board's true self you got?
Yes.
And for the, for the record, uh, can you state and spell your name?
Diana DeSoto.
And sir?
Mendy.
Mendy? M-E-N?
M-E-N-D.
E-E. And you're the owners of the subject property?
Yes.
Are you, you may have a seat, uh, just
There's three seats there? You can sit on the, okay. All right. So you're on forty-six Lake Shore Drive. I assume that's Lake Shore Drive in precipice, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you have an existing foundation for a detached garage?
Yes.
Okay. I assume that was probably put in many years ago?
Yes.
Would you use the microphone? There's a third microphone. Would you
Nineteen forty-six.
Nineteen forty-six.
Yes.
It's already on.
Predates, uh,
The ordinance.
Ordinance. What are we doing here?
Well, does that have a structure on it?
Okay, so, um, and what is the, what's the variances that are required here?
He's gonna set, uh,
Setback?
Side yard and cover.
Of one point eight feet.
And it's existing.
Yep.
And building coverage existing, existing. Pervious coverage, so you're not changing pervious coverage, you're not changing building coverage. You merely need a variance for the one point eight feet which is, which has, exists.
Yes.
Have you discussed it with the next door neighbor that you wanna put a garage down?
Yes.
And they don't have any problem?
No.
Okay. What is it, two car garage, one car garage?
One, one car garage.
One car garage. Is there anything between where the garage is gonna be and the neighbor or on the common line? Any bushes, fence, trees, anything?
Fence, open area.
Yeah. In the fence and my, uh, garages.
Right, it's about eight, one point eight feet, it says. What kind of fence is it?
Um, metal, uh, chain.
Chain link?
Yeah, chain.
Is there any impact of the stormwater easement?
It's already there.
No, it's a
Oh, the easement?
Yeah. It's not clear on the plan, I can't.
It looks like it goes into it a little bit.
It's already there.
But it's already there.
The shed has been taken down or it's gonna be taken down?
It's still up. It's gonna be taken down.
Okay. So your coverage is decreased?
I think so.
Yeah?
Why doesn't it show that?
You guys who knows?
Okay. The garage burnt down, so we need to rebuild it. It caught fire on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay.
So we just gotta rebuild it.
Okay.
So there was a garage there. It wasn't just the foundation?
No, it was garage.
Yeah, there was a whole garage there.
Existing.
You gonna match the house?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on testimony given this evening? I hear none, see none. Nothing else you wanna add, right?
No.
You're good. Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application? In support of the application? I hear none and see none?
I'd like to ask this one way. Is the roof gonna be the same as it was before?
It's everything gonna be the same.
I didn't wanna have any new, new drainage issues coming up. Everything is the same. Okay. Yeah. That's all. I just wanted to make sure the roof was the same.
Yeah, everything's gonna be the same. We're just
I'll put the catch off any, uh, resolution.
Okay, um, any comments?
Thank you.
We're good on this one?
Replacing a parked down garage.
The minimus, the, uh, applicant resident suffered, uh, a loss and we're just gonna try and put him back together again. Okay, resolution. Someone give us a resolution so we can move on.
Application twenty-two.
Nope.
Twenty-one fifty-four. Uh, Juco Tasevsky, forty-six Lake Shore Drive, block five-five-four, lot sixteen, in the R four zone. I recommend the board grant C variance to construct a detached garage on an existing foundation contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, columns eight, ten, and thirteen.
Second, Casey.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Result of the variances granted. Can I just ask you the heritage of your name?
Oh, Macedonian.
Macedonian?
Yeah.
Very nice, very nice. Very nice. Okay, good luck.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your night.
Never would've guessed that.
You know, there's, there's, there's a one of the Indians.
Oh, definitely.
Macedonian, not too far from there.
No, 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 no. We're going to Montenegro and Croatia, hopefully.
Really?
Yeah, in September.
You're nuts.
The Greek Isles.
You're nuts.
I know. I've done stupid things. Okay, next case is twenty-two oh nine Douglas and Michelle Holler, thirty-three Nakomis. C variance to install, legalize, and air can
I think it's around one.
Twenty-two oh eight. Uh, you're
This one?
Twenty-two oh eight.
You're drawing again. There you go.
That is a previous one, maybe.
Holler was a, uh, resolution.
That was just for the resolution.
Oh, shoot. Second base. How do I, okay, all right, let's do this one. This is even better. Twenty-two oh eight Vincent and Nancy Del Viscio, Del Viscio. Forty-six Westminster Drive. Variance to construct a patio previously proved open deck, walk, and shed. Good evening.
Uh, raise your right hands, please. You swear affirm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Uh, Nancy Del Viscio, uh, D-E-L-V-I-S-C-I-O.
And Vincent?
Vincent.
And you're the owners of the subject property? Uh, sir, are you gonna testify?
I'm here for any clerical, uh, questions that may apply.
Are you the contractor?
Yeah.
Raise your right hand. You swear affirm any testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got, and you're the contractor and
Uh, Thomas Wall, W-A-L-L.
Thank you.
Before we get started, I'm looking at the plans. There was a patio or a deck there previously.
There was origi- Originally, there was a patio for the first owners, and now there's a deck, but we wanna put it back to a patio.
The same place?
Same place. And we want, the patio's gonna be the same footprint as the deck is right now. And actually, the deck, when the deck was built in two thousand one, there was a variance.
And when you went to zoning, they said it was what?
They
So the, the, the issue that had come up through zoning was that there were structures on the property that weren't part of the original variance that was granted.
Such as?
There's a shed on the property that was not on the property, I guess, when the original permit was approved. Uh, and there was, I think, like a walkway was added to the front of the house that was not on it, so it kinda got red flagged in zoning. But there was a variance given in two thousand one for the same exact project that we're proposing, which is replacing the deck with the patio. And it went from a patio to a deck twenty years ago.
So basically, basically, we're approv-, you're looking for us to approve the walkway and the shed. Because the other thing is already, it's been around the Mulberry Bush a couple times.
Yeah.
Not changing. You're going
They don't even have the shed in years of variance.
Legalize an existing sixty-four foot shed.
Would you find that?
Yeah, where's the shed? Where's the shed?
Yes, I guess that wasn't in the initial
Okay. So
I'm wasting time.
So you're, you're allowed eleven point four percent building coverage and your proposal is thirteen point one-two.
Okay.
Which we're talking about less than two percent increase in building coverage. You're allowed twenty-four point three percent and pervious coverage and you're asking for twenty-seven point three nine. Which again is not that significant.
Well, that was already granted.
No, this is what we want now. This is what we're gonna grant now because of the, because of the walkway and the shed.
All right.
Uh, it, it's only a sixty foot or sixty-four square foot shed, it's an eight by eight shed. Is it, if you're not asking for a side yard setback, rear yard setback?
No.
Any complaints from your neighbors? You have wild parties on this playing music until one in the
No.
Promise you'll never do that unless you invite us over to the party. If you invite us over to the party, then we'll, you know.
Yeah.
I have to get a little levity.
That's okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
There's a lot of boring crap going on. Okay. Uh, anybody see any problems here? Any, any?
I, I don't, no.
Who's got a problem? No?
No.
Chad, you're okay down there?
Good, we're good.
We're good. We don't have any drainage issues. You're not gonna cause any additional drainage, drain like that?
No, it's a
Deal with that if you have to.
Existing.
There are, I wanna note, there are separate permits that were, uh, uh, dropped off at engineering back in December that are awaiting approval based on the outcome of tonight's meeting.
Fine.
So there are two separate engineering permits that I have applied for
Okay.
that are in addition to this. So if anything, the drainage circumstance will be better than what it currently is.
You'll deal with that. You'll deal with that. Okay. Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this, what, you're, you're not, you're a witness on another application. Okay, I'm gonna dispense. There's no members of the public here, so I'm not gonna ask any more questions of, of the and there's nothing else you guys like to add. You're good. Okay. The minimus?
This is the minimus.
Easy? Easy? Okay. Um,
Yeah.
Somebody frame a resolution so we can move on to our, uh, D variances?
Application twenty-two oh eight Vincent and Nancy Del Viscio, forty-six Westminster Drive, block seven forty-one, lot thirty.
Okay.
In the R two zone, I recommend the board grant the C variance to construct a patio, uh, walk and shed contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, column ten thirteen.
Second, ready.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yeah.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Result of the variances granted. We'll memorialize this in two weeks and then you'll be free to proceed.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome. All right. You ready, Mr. O'Neil?
We have a witness here, right?
Uh, let me take a five minute break. You want five minutes? Let's take a five minute break.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neil, here on behalf of the applicant. Zoom auto, this is a continuing hearing. Uh, at the direction of the board, we actually were able to fly a drone and, uh, photographs the reduced site uh, conforming to the application here. There are currently sixty-four cars parked on the site. There have been since the last meeting. I believe the board has those photos. We do have some additional copies of those photos. We can mark as an exhibit.
I can't hear him, Jim.
Can't hear me, Mr. Jaskiewicz? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry about that. I was saying, I was saying that the, uh, since the last hearing, the applicant flew a drone up the site, took photographs of the site with the car count down to sixty-four, which confirm, conforms to the application. It's before the board tonight. I believe the board has those photos. We do have some copies of those photos. I can mark them as an exhibit here this evening. And we can proceed with that and discuss this. But I have with me the, uh, applicant himself to discuss operations on site since the reduction of cars down to sixty-four. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call him back.
You wanna go?
Sure the record his name again?
Paul Berenson.
Paul Berenson?
Paul Berenson, okay. And you've been previously sworn, so you're still under that same oath?
Paul, sit down. So you have some photos with you this evening? These are the photos that were provided to the board previously.
Correct.
These are the photos of, uh, our planner, John McDonough's drone shots taken. Uh, why don't we introduce those? Can I introduce? How many photos do you have of them?
Uh,
Is it A one, Joe, or you want us to do A one with today's date?
Yeah, let's just do A one with today's date.
A one, five, four. Twenty-two.
So while I'm passing these out, Mr. Berenson, why don't you describe operations on the site since you've reduced the car count down? How is the site operating now?
Flawlessly. In essence, it is definitely easier.
You speak into the microphone?
Microphone, that's the mic. Sorry, it's an addition of the muffled mask. No, it's definitely, uh, easier to move around the site. We're free to move around the site in all disruptions.
Your staff are able to move the cars back and forth without any trouble?
Correct.
The, uh, site deliveries are conducted on the site with the vehicle, with the trucks pulling onto the site. Cars are offloaded without any incident?
As instructed.
Uh, do you find it easier to move the cars around now that the count is down to sixty-four?
Yes.
Would you say the site operates better now than it did with the, uh, higher car count?
It absolutely does.
Certainly more safe. Certainly more safe, correct?
It's absolutely safe, but we've never had an incident on the site in the first place.
All right. Uh, no further, no further questions for this witness.
Any questions of this witness? How many cars did you take away? I mean, what
If I'm not mistaken, prior to the previous meeting at the height, we had, uh, some, roughly eighty-six units, which was not meant by design. We had a number of vendors who did not pick up purchased vehicles from the property on time and, uh, they just ended up that was not the goal to begin with. We've been, uh, trying to gradually reduce the number of cars to what is a comfortable level, which is exactly where we are right now.
All right, so the picture that you just handed out, that has sixty-four cars now?
Correct.
And if we were to drive by the site right now, the configuration will be the same configuration?
Identical configuration, different cars.
Different cars, understood, but still sixty-four.
Sixty-four.
Right, but what you're asking for is more, isn't it?
No, it's, we've reduced it down to this, uh, location. It's down to sixty-four.
Well
Exactly what you see in the photo.
The, the site is authorized for twenty
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
On the plan, you show seven more spaces.
It's all it had was twenty-five. We had, uh, originally ninety-one, I think, at, uh, car spaces. There's six, uh, vehicle spaces reserved for, uh, customers to park, which you see there are no customers parked there on the site.
Well, I don't see the spaces in the photo. Well, is that a, is that one car in front of the building?
Yeah, I think there's just one.
The photo was taken early in the morning prior to us opening.
Right now?
So there are no customers on premises at that time?
Where do you propose spaces D, E, and F to go?
Uh, the parking spaces are marked right in front of the buildings, so where you do see that lone gate in front of the office.
Right, that's A, B, and C.
Those customer parking spaces, and that's where customers had been parking.
But I'm looking at the But I'm looking at the plan.
We had, uh, previously committed to bank those spaces, to take those off the application, D, E, and F, the second row in the corner.
Oh, okay.
Well, they're still shown on the revised plan.
We committed to remove those at the last hearing. We have not revised the plan since that application.
You added landscaping, yes?
That was added at the last meeting.
I'm looking at the plan prepared by Mr. McDonough, which is, which is dated January twenty-sixth.
Yes, but since the preparation of that plan, and we'll reaffirm here that we're permitting, we're proposing banking those spaces, removing those spaces.
All right, so the total you're asking for is sixty-seven?
Yes, that's correct.
Twenty-five is allowed?
Twenty-five was allowed under the prior approval, yes.
The other cars that you shipped off somewhere else, is there storage for more vehicles there?
We're actively trying to pursue more storage. Um, we have cars in service, which we're dropping off at local dealerships. We have cars, uh, yeah, we ship a number of units over to, uh, our citizens of Caldwell, from another alley.
Could you please speak into the mic?
They're being worked on by them. They're getting business from us.
Paul, you need to speak into the mic. We have a member, uh, online.
Yes. Mr. Jaskiewicz, can you, did you hear everything I said? Or would you like me to repeat?
I, I have one question. I thought the testimony was that there's sixty-four cars in the, in the picture, correct? From the drone? And that's what you're proposing, sixty-four? But then I heard sixty-seven.
Parking sixty-four cars with three spaces in front of the building for, uh, customers.
Yeah, which one is up, the only one that appears?
That is not included in the sixty-four.
No, so it would be a total of sixty-seven spaces.
And the bank parking has been withdrawn?
That's correct.
So it's going to be sixty-four cars?
Sixty-four cars on the site with three spots in front of the garage.
So, I'm still confused. You have sixty-four cars plus three for the customers?
That's right, it's, uh...
So sixty-seven, and, uh, the bank parking, uh, parking stalls?
We're removing that.
So you're not asking for approval for that?
No.
Okay, just making sure.
I, um, I got some more questions.
Sure.
If you look at the plan, I'm guessing you have a copy of the plan?
I'm looking at the landscaping plan right now. I do have a copy of the other plan.
Yeah, the landscaping plan is what I'm looking at, actually. I was wondering how many cars you have to move in order to get to, uh, the cars in the left-hand corner? Like cars number one and two? Car number twenty-six? Yeah, let's say car number twenty-six. How many cars would you have to move to get to that?
Uh, ordinarily, three, no more than four cars. Those are the hardest-to-reach spots. Um, it is the farthest corner. It doesn't make it impossible to put out parking cars there where you, where losing valuable parking and space. And we're able to remove the cars in front of it without, uh, getting onto the public roadway. Everything goes in work.
Did, did fire look at this? Because if you have all these cars parked there, I mean, and there's a fire in the building, did they, are they okay with it?
We've, we've provided all these plans. I haven't directly forwarded anything to fire. It's not my normal practice.
I sent these to, um, the board planner and engineer.
If I may speak, last time we sought approval from the fire department, we actually, I actually had a conversation with the fire marshal, who quite directly said that they couldn't care less about the number of cars.
That's hearsay, and you can't really testify to ask for that.
My apologies, I'll stop.
We don't have any negative reports from the fire.
They never saw it.
They've seen the plan.
Did they ever see it?
The original application.
They've seen the plan, yes.
What was the answer to that? Did they see it?
They have seen it, yes.
They haven't reported. Did anyone determine whether or not DOT, NJDOT, would allow you to put the landscaping in the public right-of-way?
Perfect, Bob.
Because all the adjoining properties appear to have all their landscaping on their lots.
We have not made any inquiries with NJDOT. I see no reason why they would object to landscaping in the right-of-way.
How do you say that?
Because it's subject to, they do work, they take up the landscape.
What are, what are we talking about in terms of landscaping? Putting shrubs out there?
Shrubs.
The only buffer they have is the street.
You know what it's going to be like, the first major storm we have? And those big-ass trucks go down Route Forty-six? And plow all that salt, salt and snow into those shrubs? They're going to kill them.
None of them are going to live, yeah.
They're not going to live. They won't, they won't live, they won't live two years.
That's the astroturf.
And that's around the whole property, because they're going to plow the whole?
Yeah, they'll kill anything.
Okay. The other question I have is, do you need the three, do you need the three driveway openings? Yeah, you show three driveway openings.
We do not need the three driveway openings. They were there by the original design, going back thirty years ago, when this, I suppose, was a gas station.
Can you not curb? You can't curb them because I'm not sure whether it's DOT or has to curb them?
Well, that's in the DOT right-of-way. I don't think there's any restriction from removing a curb.
You have to go to DOT to?
To close up?
Touch the, touch the driveways.
Yeah, I just, I just, just concerned about the third driveway open, the one that's the farthest west.
Well, we can agree to do that, subject to NJDOT approval.
Okay.
We'll also do the landscaping, subject to NJDOT approval.
How about they say no?
Then we'll leave it to the township forester as to how he wants us to do plantings around the property.
How about that affects your parking?
As soon as you move, move the landscaping onto the property, you don't have sixty-four cars.
No, there's no room for us to do that.
Correct.
So if they don't agree to landscaping in the front right-of-way, there's no landscaping in the front right-of-way. We'll agree to do whatever other landscaping gets you all schmucked.
You won't be in compliance with the approval. If the approval's contingent on the landscaping, and DOT rejects it, it's like, it's like DEP rejecting you up that line. Wet, wetlands line, you're in trouble.
Can I just have a moment to console my engineer?
Sure.
Is anything, is that black line, the right-of-way line?
The black, the heavy black line is the property line.
What's the right-of-way line?
The right-of-way line is that same line. Yes, so everything's in the right-of-way.
Pretty much.
There's one little corner up there where the, uh, what's that, uh, Cherry Hill and Forty-six come together a little bit on the property.
Yeah, Cherry Hill would be a county road, so they may, they can pull up for that.
I'm not sure. I think the jurisdiction is all DOT up there. The ramp, I think they, when they do the ramps on the side, they usually take jurisdiction. You might be right, but I don't think so.
So, Mr. Chadwick, you are correct, uh, in pointing out that the majority of this landscaping is on NJDOT property, especially along Cherry Hill Road and along the ramp. I'm being advised that we don't expect to have much trouble getting NJDOT approval in those spots for that landscaping, since it will not obstruct any views. So we are comfortable conditioning this upon NJDOT approval. I don't think the analogy of moving wetlands lines is, uh, directly analogous here to putting plantings in these particular areas on this site. There appears to be plenty of room. Of course, if NJDOT does improvements that takes more of that roadway, we need to do something else. But that seems a little unlikely, frankly. But we never know.
Questions by the board?
You, you feel that this is the bare minimum number of cars you need to keep here to stay in operation?
Yeah.
And, and I'll tell you what I'm looking at. My, my concern is just the appearance of all the double-parked cars, which I will say is greatly better, so much better than what we last saw. But even if you just look around and everything in this photograph you submitted, there's no double-parked anything, and it just looks very congested. The only double parking is on your lot, and I'm just wondering, and I counted here about fourteen double-parked cars. You can't get that lower and still be operational?
So in regards to double-parked cars, if you look at, uh, the line along Route Forty-six, you have cars facing outward towards Route Forty-six, and you have cars facing inward to the lot. Clients who come into the lot are looking at the inventory that's facing them. Clients who pass by, as much as we draw most of our traffic from the internet with scheduled appointments, but when you're passing by a store, you would like to see pretty cars on a road, that's what they're looking at. The deck, um, along the ramp, where, on either side of the building, those are all facing inward, uh, because that's a ramp. We don't want anyone looking anywhere by ahead of themselves, straight ahead. Um, and those simply go inside of the lot. Um, do I feel that it's a bare minimum? As everyone here is well aware, we originally asked for a significantly higher number of cars. We understand that at certain point in time, the number of cars was overwhelming, and it did create complications for us, not just with the township and the board, but as far as internal operation. We've been working with this number of cars since our last meeting. It's a comfortable number that we can move around the lot. Here physically on the property, you will see that the appearance from the ground level to the eye level, it does not look congested or overwhelming. It looks nicely and neatly parked and pleasant to the eye. And I've been, and I'm sure everyone here has been, the dealerships that are either empty nowadays or some dealerships that are overwhelmed. We're not trying to pursue that kind of image. We want to have a neat appearance that's consistent with this township. We understand that. But we also want to be able to operate the profitable dealership. And this is the business where value matters, and the number of cars is what translates into a value.
So, if the site is zoned for only twenty-five cars, correct?
The prior approval was for twenty-five cars, yes.
That's all right.
What was the approval, right?
Yeah.
So you, you know, twenty-five cars.
That's back in nineteen ninety-two, if I'm not mistaken.
Still current, though.
I'm sorry, what year?
Nineteen ninety-two, if I'm not mistaken.
It's pretty good. It was ten years before I was on the board, so you're wrong.
Really?
Yeah, it was in the nineties. I'm guessing like ninety-five.
It doesn't, Scott.
It doesn't, but, but if I may say, it was an entirely different era. Yes, it's only thirty years ago. But when I personally started in the industry twenty years ago, a little over twenty years ago, a dealership with twenty, twenty-five cars was considered to be a real business. Now you've got the mega-stores that are stocking hundreds and thousands of cars. We're not that.
Now, but the, but the difference is your cars, I mean, those are all online. Your, your cars are designed to be, people find the cars online, and they come to you and they actually see the car. That's the difference in your business.
That is a very big difference, of course. It's a very competitive marketplace, and you've got the big names such as Carvana and Roam and so forth. We think you can buy the car online and hope you're going to get it within a reasonable period of time, and then you get to lay your hands on it. The difference is, yes, we are a hybrid dealership in this respect. We expect you to find us online. We want you to reach out to us online. We want to engage you and process most, if not the entire transaction, online. We would love to set up an appointment for you so that you can come and put your hands on the car before you complete the transaction. So in many respects, we don't want the window shoppers, but we absolutely want to have the appearance. But everything internal, we attempt to structure and schedule as much as humanly possible.
Understood. What I'm hearing, though, is that most of your business is online, and you want to get, I don't know, ninety percent of the way with the customer online, and the last ten percent, they come and see the car.
That's all we do.
Yeah, roughly, yeah. That doesn't alleviate my concern about the appearance. And I know you want a certain, sorry, Scott.
Hold on, one second. No, Scott, go ahead.
You want a certain appearance. My point is, I believe, and this is subjective, and, you know, you said this doesn't look bad. I believe this looks, it still looks crowded. And even if we, you know, what, where I'm trying to get to with you is a point where you can be successful with your business, but still conform with the lay of the land in the area. And I'm just, my perspective right now is that, especially along Forty-six, with the stacking of the cars there, granted, it's much better, it still looks a little dense to me.
If I may ask, Mr. Kaplan, which part of it looks dense to you?
Just that all the double parking along Route Forty-six, it's a little less obtrusive off the ramp. You're looking straight ahead. You don't really have time to look left or right. You're looking at the car breaking in front of you. There are some trees there. It's broken up a little bit. Looking along Forty-six is where it just doesn't look pleasing to me.
If I may ask, have you driven along Route Forty-six, that's our lot, a little pathway specifically? I'm sure you have.
Many, many times, including on my way here tonight.
Thank you. My perspective, I have several cars naturally. One of them is a smaller sports car, where I'm much closer to the ground, and I really do not see much beyond the first row. And I'm a tall fellow, but I really don't see much beyond the first row. My other vehicle is an SCD. It's a larger SCD, Tahoe. And I still barely see past the first row, the one that's facing outward to Route Forty-six. So like you said, I thoroughly respect that every opinion is subjective.
That's because the, uh, property is sloping down from the road, correct?
Correct, yes.
That area of the property where the cars are parked along Forty-six, the cars on Forty-six are actually higher than the cars in the second row.
And significantly higher, I bet. We're talking about a difference on a slope. I probably know better. Probably about two, three feet.
Just telling you my perspective.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Scott's, Scott's got a question.
So, so my question is this. Um, you said most of your businesses is online. So what percentage of them who come to your facility have already, in their mind, picked out the car they want to buy?
Did you hear the question?
Yes, I heard a question. I, I wouldn't want to mislead and give you the exact statistics, but I would say that more than half of the people are coming in to see a specific car. We do have drive-ins.
Not using it as a showroom, per se. It's really as a, a storage place that someone comes down, they see the car they think they wanted, and then they close the transaction, per se.
That's not exactly a storage space, per se, because when they do come to see the car, lay hands, lay their hands on their car, make sure that it's consistent with their expectations, the entire transaction is processed at the dealership. You can't process transaction at the storage. I personally handle financing for clients and really the closing part of the transaction.
Well, I, I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at, because I'm, I'm not giving you great, but I guess my point is that if most people are coming down, and it's like closing the sale, they see the car, and you know they're coming, the car could be stored somewhere else. You know John is coming for that car. You bring that car in, right? And, and the sale is closed or not, but you're not showing them the forty-five or fifty-five other cars there. You're showing them a pretty specific car that he's coming for.
Well, what would be the cost to do an operation like that?
Well, first of all, you do have, let's say, a third of the clients who will come in to just browse, and that actually includes most of the local clientele. People from, from Persipony, then, then the Rockaways, uh, mountain lakes, you name it. Lot, local clients stop by because they're driving by. Um, so that by design will exclude most of them. Uh, they are aware of the fact that there is a dealership in place. A lot of them are repeat customers. Um, and if I am hearing you correctly, if I may ask, are you suggesting that having a significantly smaller number of cars could possibly not have effect on business as a result of that?
I'm suggesting that you, uh, get closer to what the land was you originally zoned for.
So, imagine empty shelves in the store. Walk into any...
You, you have to understand something here, okay? You've got a small piece of property. You're trying to overwhelm that property. You had ninety cars, now you're talking sixty-four cars. I was here for the original presentation of twenty-five cars, and we debated that application for many, many hours, okay? Many, many hours. And you've come along, originally quadrupling it, and then three times it. Believe me, I would, I would love, there's nothing more than I would love to see you succeed on this property.
We appreciate that.
But I have a big problem with you trying to make it look like Lodi, okay? Make it look like Persipony. Make it look like the other car dealers in this town. Because I don't think there's another, well, the one on the corner of Edwards Road and Forty-six probably mirrors you, but that was, that was grandfathered in years and years and years ago. It was nothing we can remember that came, that was a, um, that was a...
Pre-sole.
Pre, so, you know, you can, you can keep talking about business, but if you ain't got the property, you ain't going to get a big variance for much. I can tell you that, you're not. You can see the way people are talking. People are not, this board is not encouraged to give you a significant amount of coverage with the cars. So you got to start thinking about something that may be dropping down a little bit. What's your next, what's your next plateau? I'm looking at a plan here that cuts thirteen cars out, okay? Opens up that third driveway, cuts the, um, the second row of cars along Forty-six, as Mr. Kaplan mentioned, okay? And to bring it down to about fifty cars. That's twice what you're, what you're authorized, twice. I don't know if the rest of the board would be willing to go for it. I ain't going for sixty-four cars, I can tell you that. So stop talking about the pie in the sky, this is where I have to do business. If this is the way you have to do business, you're in the wrong place. You're in the wrong, you're in the wrong piece of property.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
You've touched off on a very important subject to us. You did mention the difference between Lodi and Persipony. I am not from New Jersey, I live in New York, but I'm acutely aware of the differences, of what the comparison would be. And you've made a comparison to a certain other used car lot along Route Forty-six that has been grandfathered in, and on a much smaller property gives a significantly larger inventory. We're going to forget about that. But this is Persipony, and it is about appearance. I agree with you. I respect that. I've come to learn that. The quality of inventory that we keep at the location, the kind of cars that we keep at the location, in my opinion, of course, it is subjective. It's far more consistent with...
That was the original application. They were going to be upscale Mercedes, BMWs, uh, you were here, John, right?
You could have this layout with all McLarens. We still wouldn't like it, okay?
You go, you go, you go right down the block in Denville. I went by there today, today or yesterday. They have all the white SUVs lined up on the front, look so nice. Only one row of cars. I don't know what they had behind the building, because I couldn't see, but, but it gives you the, gives you the impression that, well, I'm not going to say anymore.
I think the important thing that the board and the applicant needs to understand... I think the important thing that the board and the applicant needs to understand, this is a use variance. Looking at the aerial photograph, this use is totally foreign to what the zoning is for. With the office buildings, commercial space. And now you're trying to pack that little island and you had some testimony before that spoke about the operation, the operation and the efficiencies of operation. It's nothing to do with doubling the intensity of these variants.
Well, with respect, Mr. Chadwick, I think that the question of operation and the safe use of the site is the main question here. Can the site be conducted, can business be conducted in a safe manner?
Operation was from the business standpoint, not the site safety.
We spoke about.
Never seen a plan on how to get a truck on and off here. I've seen them on.
We've, we indicated that at the first hearing, that the small trucks are coming into the one forty-six and going off on Cherry Hill Road. We definitely did testify to that. We testified to the fact that large car carriers cannot come onto the site. Whether you eliminated thirteen cars or not, you're never gonna get a car carrier on the site because of the slope of that.
And we had an aerial photograph showing a car carrier parked next to the site.
And we made a commitment that that's not gonna happen, that those car carriers are being sent along down the road, not to deliver cars on this site. It's, the question is the safe operation of the site. The question is, can business be conducted in a safe manner? And that's exactly what my client has testified to. This question about, I don't want it to look like Lodi. We agree. We don't want the site to look bad, but we think the site looks much better in its configuration here with sixty-four cars. An empty site does not look much better. But, but I, I think. It's, you still got cars up against the road. You still got these, you still got used cars on the lot, whether it's twenty-five, you want an empty parking lot?
Well, I think, I think the board is concerned about increasing the, uh, not, that, that, that use. It's not a conform use.
Well, we understand.
It's doubling it.
I think a viable business with cars on the lot being conducted in a safe manner is much more attractive than an empty parking lot, which is just not gonna be utilized for anything other than twenty-five cars. I wasn't involved in the original application. I don't know who was involved in the original application. Frankly, as I sit here, it's been so long since we started this application. But to say that we're gonna just have empty blacktop and open up another curb cut here on the road, which is just an invitation for a truck to try to access the property from that, that location, come down the slope, which I don't think, I mean, I could bring my engineer back, but I don't, I think we'd all agree that's not gonna be a safe operation of a truck. And how do you stop that guy? Do you position somebody up here at the entranceway? We think the entrance off of forty-six needs to be closed. It was obviously a gas station or something like that at some point, which is why it's got the multiple entrances. So we'll agree to close that, subject to N J D O T approval. But we think it's a safer operation of the site with one entrance in on forty-six and one entrance out on Cherry Hill Road.
Okay, I'll, I'll buy leaving the, leaving, leaving the entrance closed, but I'm, I'm not buying double decking the, double stacking the cars along forty-six. I'm sorry.
If you reduce the fifteen cars, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, I can figure out the specifics. You're still at about forty-five, which is significantly, that's, that's, that's a huge gift. Huge. If the board were to approve it at forty-five. And what I'm hearing is there's, there's an, it, you know, there's a desire on the part of the board to help you be successful here. But there are conditions and compromises that are gonna have to happen.
All right. May I have a moment to consult with my client?
Yes, sir.
Or more than this second row?
I'm talking to the chat.
My main, my main concern is that.
All, all the double's are gonna.
Let's try to explain that to somebody. Well, I'm saying eliminate all these ones here, but you're bringing down fifty cars. Oh, I don't care about that. Yeah, just get a little, these, this whole. Make it, yeah, fifteen cars. That's it, that's forty-six.
A hundred percent.
Here, you're stopped.
When was the last time there was twenty-five cars in there? Never, because they, they just kept piling them in from day one, but then they went out of business. And then, and then there was a, a rental truck in there for a while. Remember him? Um, it wasn't, it wasn't the Corriganano, it was the other wackadoo. It was his client. It was Joe's client. Mike, who'd that, it was like, it was, God, I can't think of his name. Another Italian guy. And, um,
It was Joe, the Italian.
Yeah, it was.
Hi Dad.
And, um, I, I mean, it was like, they want, they wanted multiple use. And then all of a sudden, there's, there's a hundred freaking cars there.
Right now it is.
I told you what I got for my eight-year-old, uh, C R V. Eighteen, eighteen. How much you paid for that? Only had thirty-six thousand miles, but it was stripped. It was nothing. It was, it was the basic.
Eighteen.
Yeah, and I, and the month before, carpet broom was offering me nineteen-five, but I hung on to it for another month, waiting for my new car to come in.
Toyota's offered it ton for my Highlander and I just, where, where am I going? To buy another one, this is gonna kill me.
Uh, you mean, if you have an extra car, you know.
If you have an extra.
This is the time to sell it. It, it's. I mean, I, what I made on that car paid the premium on the new car. So it's like I didn't even pay premium on the new car.
How much you paid for the one you originally? The one you got eighteen for?
Twenty-nine. And I drove it for eight years. Cost me eleven thousand for eight years. And I think maybe five hundred dollars with the maintenance in all those years.
That's it?
That's it. That was it. And I took, and I did everything they were supposed to.
That's right. You didn't have to buy tires.
I didn't buy tires. That's right. I would, they were, boy, they were really, those are good tires. I got thirty-six thousand. My shirt sucks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I've had an opportunity to consult with my client. We discussed site operations. We discussed the elimination of the cars in the second row along Route forty-six. My client's concern is that if that space is opened up, it'll be difficult to control customers moving around the site. Especially coming in off the road, which we still propose having the one entrance for safety reasons.
But if the people, if I could. Mister, Mister O'Neill, you put a couple cones up and don't let people drive into that area.
Mr. Chairman, I just, for one, another moment, please. Just another moment. I mentioned that we discussed the, uh, removal of the second row around Route forty-six. My client was concerned about cars from customers coming in in an uncontrolled manner, parking there, interfering with operations. Regardless of that concern, my client is proposing removing the second row, which is nine cars, reducing the application from sixty-four to fifty-five cars and eliminating that second row of cars along Route forty-six. My client requests that the second row of cars in the back of the site, which is quite frankly barely visible from the roadway, be retained because it is necessary for him to have inventory on site for people who find cars online and wanna come in immediately and look at cars. The number of inventory cars is a critical number for my client in the operation of his site. So we are reducing the application by the removal of the second row of cars on forty-six to fifty-five cars. The application is so amended.
Questions by the board? So you, you have fifty-five plus three cars for the customers? I just, you know, total, total cars?
Yes, I am still requiring those spaces for customers be in front of the building. We do not want the customers randomly parking in the site. So it's fifty-five cars to, for sale, plus the three in front of the building. Fifty-eight.
Mister O'Neill, there are eleven cars on Route forty-six, right? Double stack?
I count nine.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. And then you got four, five more double stacked along the, uh, you got, you got a top, total of fifteen, sixteen cars double stacked in front of the building. I don't care about the ones you got in the back. Nobody sees them. I'm concerned about the ones in the front. And so I'm, I'm thinking fifteen, sixteen cars have to go.
I, I think we should, we should look at the actual diagram that they have given instead of the picture. And because that tells us exactly how many cars.
I agree with the picture as reality. This was actually happening, so.
Well, we are proposing the application that is on this plan in front of this board. The cars will be parked in the manner illustrated on the plan that was filed for this application. I was looking at the site plan prepared by Mr. McDonough showing landscaping. I am now looking at Mr. Stewart's plan. And those plans show nine cars parked behind a lot. The parking of sixty-four cars will be done in the configuration shown. Just because we were looking at it, everyone had it in front of them on the landscape plan, which shows sixty-four cars, nine cars in the second row of the lot. So I'm proposing on that landscaping plan, by reference, removing the nine cars that are the second row on Route forty-six. So the cars will be parked in the.
Are those numbers seventeen to twenty-five on that plan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Joshua. So we're proposing removing those cars. The other cars will remain in the existing configuration. Of course, with the removal of the three additional customer spots parked behind the cars in the corner. Identified as.
Help me understand this though. So I'm, I'm looking at both, okay? So on the, on, on the, on the diagram, I'm looking from spot sixteen to thirteen. Is one, two, what's that, thirteen spots?
Sixteen to thirteen.
That's fourteen spots.
On which, uh, which diagram?
I'm sorry, this is, uh,
Let me get that.
So that's fourteen spots, okay? Then I count reality with the photo that you submitted. One, two, three, four, just looking at the front row up along forty-six. From the white car on the left by the driveway, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. In that seemingly same configuration.
Are you gonna be aligning these, aligning the parking lot?
That would help. So at the, the site plan shows more cars than actually fit. And the photograph shows those cars door to door. I don't even know, I could get into some of those.
We have to conform to the plan.
Well, I know we have to conform to the plan, but the reality is it's not happening.
The picture doesn't conform to the plan.
But the picture shows fewer cars than the plan.
In the same spot.
In the same exact spots. That's my point. So I, I'm just thinking the plan might have been a little aggressive. Cause I'm looking at reality here. I don't think you can squeeze in any more cars.
But Dave, are you saying most of the Navy orders, if we do do this, then have to be striped correctly?
Uh, that would be tremendously helpful.
I would agree with that.
So I think what Mr. Kaplan is saying is even if you granted that number of cars, it's gonna be grossly different than what the picture shows.
We will, we will conform to the plan. We will stripe the lot.
And you're removing pl- pl- spaces seventeen to twenty-five and the bank parking spaces.
Yes, Mr. Chadwick.
And spots three to sixteen, I just don't see how that fits.
I think if you look close, the photo shows cars parked in that driveway that is, and, and the diagram also shows cars in that driveway. Except it shows six lined up into that driveway on the site plan. And four on, maybe five. So there's something a little.
Oh, he has vans.
And it's the same issue on parking spot fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine.
Does anyone know how wide these spaces are shown on this plan? We do.
Yeah.
Just one moment, Mr. Chadwick. My engineer has double checked. As indicated on the plans, they are eight feet wide?
So with approval, so to Mr. King's point, with, yeah, assuming approval, spots fifty-seven, fifty-eight and fifty-nine, you would only have, in that area, you're only gonna have three cars, not roughly four or five that's depicted here.
But you, you know, the issue, the problem is, is, is that the, the, the reality of the picture calls into question these, the, the, the plot plan.
But that's, that's my point.
Well, we've agreed to stripe the lot.
Yeah, but it won't matter because if you, if you're granted certain amount, amount of spots. And, and, and then it, 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 it's gonna make your, you, you have to take room for other areas. You, you're gonna have to double up. You understand what we're saying?
No.
All right, so it, it, on this picture in, on forty-six, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, twelve cars on forty-six. The spots that you have, there's more cars. I think there were, there was fourteen or fifteen.
Because there's more. There's a lot jam on cars.
Well, the.
So what's gonna, what would happen?
I think we've gotta live with the site plan, Mr. King.
I'm sorry?
I don't see how I can amend the site plan with a photo. I understand everybody focusing on the photo because that's what's going on in real life.
Well, what's, orientation is different in the photo than the site plan. The cars not aligned as per the site plan. So basically, we, we discuss this, uh, parking spaces based on the site plan itself now.
Well, the cars seem to be in the photo extending farther into the curb cut that we're using as the entrance on forty-six than they do in the site. This is just me looking at that. But we're gonna be striping that. We're gonna be trying to put some landscaping at that corner there. That shrub. So that's gonna take care of that space. So we're gonna leave the spaces, one and two, and then three through sixteen there. In that configuration, striped. There will be no second row of cars, which is my understanding the problem that the board has from forty-six. They don't like the look of that. They want it to conform to the other car dealerships, which have one row of cars facing the highway. And that's what we're gonna do. Exactly like the plan. So we'll stripe it and it'll be in accordance with the plan. There won't be that spillover at the, uh, entranceway there.
Can I just correct one thing? One row of cars in front of the building on the forty-six side. So you've got about another four or five cars that are double stacked along the, the exit ramp there. One row of cars.
Yes, I is.
In this L shape. It's about fifteen cars. You know, if we give you a variance for twice what you had, I would think you'd be jumping for joy. There was obviously a lot of thought that went into the twenty-four cars some thirty years ago. There was, there was a lot of thought that went into that. There was obviously a lot of thought that went into the twenty-four cars some thirty years ago, it was, there was a lot of thought that went into that.
If the board sees fit to approve the application, we will reduce the car count to fifty-five cars.
Is that your entitled entire presentation?
It is, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Do I have a motion to go into conference?
So.
Um, just for a record, there are no members of the public here. That was a, a motion by, uh, Mr. Kaplan, second?
Seconded.
Is there any discussion, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Got a volunteer to start? Do I have to pick names out of that ad here or go alphabetically? I'll start.
Okay, alphabetically.
Uh, based upon the landscaping plan and the, and the way they marked the cars' spots out, I mean, I could, I could live with fifty-five cars. Or fifty-eight, counting the, uh, A, B, and C. The only question I have, which I think I should ask is, I'm not sure if the... The second photo that we have that we've been looking at, uh, as opposed to the, uh, original photo, shows a lot more vans, I don't know, they're wider, is that's gonna be a problem, parking them in eight-foot spots?
He gets fifty-five spots, that's all he gets.
But, uh... He's gotta provide for them. You know, with the landscaping closing the third driveway, uh, I think it's a big improvement on what's been, what's there, what's been there. And it is an isolated piece of property that there's not a heck of a lot you can really do with. I shouldn't put a guess at you there again. So I, I understand the, uh, the look of not having a double runoff cars on forty-six. And, um, knocking it down to fifty-five, I think, uh, helps, uh, you know, provide that. So, I'm in favor of fifty-five with the other things that we mentioned. And the fact that the lot's gonna be striped, I think, makes a big difference. Mr. Jaskowitz, I think you're next.
Okay, Bernie said he was going with fifty-five, eliminating numbers seventeen to twenty-five, is that correct?
Yes.
I, I think I would go along with that. I think it creates, uh, a better curb appeal, and I think it gives you a little bit of overdualability within the site. So, um, with the, the plan for the shrubs and stuff, I think I'm good with fifty-five as well.
Mr. Kaplan?
I appreciate the applicant's, uh, the changes they've made so far, I think it's, you know, obviously significantly improved the way the property is being used. Still not in love with it, I gotta be honest with you. And I, I, I don't wanna be, you know, obstinate and say no double parking anywhere. I think I would just like to see the double parking behind the building from forty-six. So I, I would wanna eliminate just a few more, uh, double parking kinda at the beginning of that ramp as you're coming down off forty-six, uh, just to get it way off the highway. The, the building provides a natural shelter, you know, blind for the double parking behind it. I wanna get it away from forty-six, that's where I wanna, that's where I'd like to be.
So what are you proposing, Dave, which numbers for?
So numbers, you know, starting at thirty-five and working in towards the building.
What you run, forty-one?
Towards, yeah, towards forty-one, um...
Seventeen to twenty-five and thirty-five to forty-one?
I, ideally, yes.
Glad to know it's seven.
It's another seven. Which would still be significantly above what's allowed.
Twice?
Twice, just about twice, yep. I, I, I really think that's reasonable. We're allowing double parking, we're allowing an excessive use of the property. I, I think it's a really big give on our part, it's, and I, and to me, that represents a really good compromise.
Mr. Faric?
Yeah, I, I do not have a concern, uh, towards the side of the ramp. Because I think the short distance of the ramp, and if there are two cars parked over there, uh, I, I really do not have a concern. Forty-six was my concern, and they eliminated, uh, those nine, uh, spots. And, uh, I also would like to see the striping in the lot, um, fifty-five plus three. And, uh, landscaping, if they cannot do the landscaping, then it will be my issue. I think, uh, landscaping should be done, uh, the way it's, uh, you know, presented here to us. So I'll be okay with the total fifty-five plus the landscaping.
Yeah.
Mr. Ready?
Same, same here, uh, if there is no landscaping, I don't want this thirty-five to forty-one also. If the landscaping is there, then that will cover major part of Route forty-six. So seventeen to twenty-five can be eliminated.
Yeah. Have I covered everyone?
Yep.
I'm with Mr. Kaplan. So I think you're at four to two. You wanna carry it until you got seven members?
Do you wanna carry it? Get an extra vote? You need five. Get the nine. Will this matter be carried to you next available meeting to allow for the seven members to vote?
We're gonna carry it till we have seven members, uh... Nora, um, since this is just gonna require a vote and comment by one member, that's not necessarily true.
Two, you got two members, and they're gonna have to review the, uh...
Because Mr. Faric is an alternate, so that if we had, well, we can just, he can stay, right? So we just need one, we need one person to listen to the tape. All right, okay?
Yeah, um...
Can we do what's, uh, one amount, do it on a seven o'clock meeting? Do we have any other seven o'clock meetings?
We have.
Put it on a seven o'clock meeting.
Hold on.
Because all we need is the, the time to vote. You can let, you know, whoever's available to listen to it, I'm listening to it.
Uh, if it's just for a vote, if you wanna put them on a seven PM, June eighth.
June eighth, okay, okay.
Thank you, we'll grant all further extensions through the end of June.
Okay.
For the hearing on June eighth.
And no further notice.
At seven o'clock. Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock, yes, seven o'clock.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, have a nice-
Okay, you have too. Do I, do we have any other business to transfer?
No.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So am I.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Jaskowitz, it was really nice having this little, uh, tate-to-tate with you this evening.
Anytime, sir.
We, we should do this more often, okay?
Thank you so much.
Stay well, bye-bye.
Have a good evening, everybody.